Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of Thursday, February 24, 2022. If everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start, you see to my right, a new member of the board. I'd like to welcome Mr. Anthony Giacobi, a longtime resident of Eastchester, has been volunteered to join the board. He was appointed earlier this month, and he's going to be with us for the duration. So welcome on board.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you and your input on all of this. So that being said...
Welcome.
Welcome. We're going to do attendance. Mr. Nemisak.
Present.
Mr. Giacobi.
Present.
Mr. Bonanno's here. Mr. Cunningham will not be able to make it. And Mr. Campana?
Present.
Great. If you have the agenda in front of you, there's just a slight switch, and I'll... One of the applications, 95A Takahoe, is being moved into the sixth position from the third. So they're going to be... We're first going to do 98 Lee, and then 102 Lee. Going to skip then to Leewood Country Club, Hanfling Load, Adriatic Cafe, and then finish up with 95A Takahoe. So the first application is 21-39 98 Lee Avenue?
Good evening. My name is Tom Abilama. I'd like to show you the two projects for 98 and 102 Lee Avenue.
Tom, I think you have to take the microphone out. Yeah.
Good evening. So this is regards to 98 and 102 Lee Avenue. That's in... These projects here right now, there's two projects next to each other, and we got the subdivision with the planning board a few months ago. And so we'd like to... Anyway, I would like to get Kasturi with my place, Tom Abilama. So she's going to be here. She's going to talk about it.
So my name's Kasturi Mohanti. I work with Tom Abilama Architects. So I'll be presenting 98 Lee. The two houses, the two houses, 98 and 108, that are on adjacent plots, 50 by 100 feet, that were subdivided into two. So 98 is a white house with black fenestrations, black shutters in the front, asphalt shingle roofing, and metal seam, standing seam enclosed, actually, the entrance porch. And then we have stone veneer in the front, in the basement level. And on the sides, we have stucco and the rare. And we step down to the garage, which is within the six-foot requirement from the average grade. So the first floor, okay, the site plan, we step up to the rare yard, and then it slopes...
About six feet.
Yeah, about three feet diagonally to the back. And then... So these are the street view. The houses that are across the street are 89 Lee, 97 Lee, 101, and 105. And then, you know, along the same side, the 94, 90, 84, and 85 is the cross, of course. So we are kind of within the, you know, neutral look. And also, the windows are all double-hung, except for the basement area where we have casement and the bathroom, which is casement. So on the basement level, we step down to the garage and the recreation room with the bathroom in the back. On the first floor, we have living room, great room, kitchen, and a study. And the second floor, we have a master bedroom and three bedrooms. So the elevations, we chose hard plank siding, white. And like I mentioned earlier, they're double-hung windows, and 98 has the front with wood black shutters to contrast. And the Thermatru doors and the garage doors are also black and Clopay garage doors. And so you can see here, it's stone veneer in the front only up to the porch level, the first-floor level. And we have the asphalt shingle roof that I had mentioned, which is a charcoal color. And the standing seam roof is black. So there are Anderson windows. And yeah, the stone veneer, it's local stone, four-inch veneer. And then... So here's some material sheet with the same information. Yeah, and the columns, they are white, Fippon fiberglass columns. So in the landscape, yeah, we have a dogwood tree in the front and in the rare. And then we have some hedges around the mechanical units outside. And we also have the dwarf Japanese holly. They're in the... Sorry. So... Yeah, the tailored junipers in the rare yard. And then we have the ship laurels, yeah, around the AC units. And we were expecting our civil engineer to go over the stormwater. So I don't know if Paul called in, Paul Bertey.
The stormwaters to be in the back, and in the front and the back, and...
Yeah, we have some retaining walls that we needed to provide on this side here because of the driveway that is going down from about 235 feet to... To... Let me see. Yeah. Yeah, we are climbing down from 230 to 228. So we had to climb up again to the rare yard, like I mentioned before. So we have a retaining wall here, and we also have a retaining wall on the other side of the driveway. And then we're stepping up two risers in the back to get into the first floor, because the back's higher elevation.
And that's the details that they have. But that's about it as far as the stormwater that we have. And this is the survey.
That's the existing survey.
So it's the same thing for the other house. If you'd like, we can show you the second one.
Now, can we finish this one, then we'll jump?
Yeah.
Just to keep it separate.
Sure.
Yeah, we understand. I'd rather just put this one behind us and then move to the next one. So that's everything?
Yeah.
Thank you. So our town's consultant from Keller Session, Mr. Tramelli, made some comments regarding the plan. And he's probably circulated it with you.
Yes.
It's actually dated the 23rd from Mr. Tramelli. There's three items. One is about landscape plans that he's asked to be submitted and coordinated with the utility and drainage plan. So this is the plan, but he's saying that this one hasn't been coordinated completely?
Yeah.
That what he's referring to?
Well, we looked at it, and then we'll look into it later, if you want.
Okay. So I don't really know what he's referring to. I imagine if we study it for 20 minutes, we'll figure it out. But I'd rather you guys just coordinate it, and we'll make that a condition of approval.
Sure.
The second one he brought up was about the storm. I'm just reading more or less from this. I'm sure you're familiar with it. The second was with the storm design. I think he noted that some of the models don't actually... Some of the units that are called out don't match the calculations.
Okay. Yeah, all right. We'll look into it also, yeah.
If I could also point out that the Keller Sessions memo of February 23, 2022, which is yesterday's date, from Joe Tramelli, doesn't... At points, it distinguishes between the two applications, 98 Lee and 102 Lee. But I think most of the recommendations in this are related to both applications. And certainly, they were treated as something of a singular application for purposes of the memo, so.
Good point. So read the memo, coordinate. We'll make it a condition of approval. And I guess, what was the third one? Of just the propane tanks? That should be... Where are they, actually? The tanks he's referring to?
Yep. By the way, we also have samples of...
Sure, thank you.
Building materials.
Just, I guess, there's another comment about the location of proposed propane tanks?
Mm-hmm.
Is that on this one, or the other one, or both?
It is on both of them.
Yeah, the comment says that it does not appear that the location of the proposed propane tanks will meet the required five-foot minimum setback from vents/intakes, sources of ignition, or windows. And the recommendation from Keller Sessions was that this detail be reviewed and coordinated with the building department prior to issuance of a building permit. Basically, they have to be moved further away from the vents/intakes, sources of ignitions, or windows.
Right. So my question was, can you point them out?
Oh, I see, I see. Sorry. So they're right here.
Mm-hmm.
And we have two window wells here, and that's where, you know, we have some hedges surrounded.
Yeah, so you just have to move them away from the vent windows. Okay, got it. As Mr. Nemisak put forth. Thank you. Yes. Very handsome. Thank you for bringing this.
And I'm sorry, you said the retaining wall's obviously on both sides of the driveway?
Yes.
And then, did you say there was a retaining wall in the back anywhere? Yeah. Is that illustrated anywhere, or let me see it on the site plan?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Should we go to the stormwater?
This one. I'm sorry. Site plan. Go back to this one.
Site plan?
Yeah.
Yes. So the retaining wall is on the side of the driveway, and on the side of the staircase.
Yes.
And there's a lower planter, just to create, you know, four-foot or five-foot drop. So that it's not a 10-foot-high wall.
Okay.
So what happened is that the building goes up...
Yes.
Sideways, about six feet.
Yeah, from this point to the other side.
What's up against the retaining wall on the left-hand... Yeah, what's...
On this side.
Yeah, that's just a...
So we're stepping up to the porch here.
So those are steps.
And on this side, we have a lower planter.
Oh, yeah, you can see it there.
Yeah, which is, you know, you kind of see the top of the... So yeah, this is a better view.
So you're in the well going up there. So it's unlikely that you're going to fall over into the driveway, because you've got that little... Is that a planting in between the two? I see it's green.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's still quite a drop, being that it's the main walkway into the house. Have you considered extending that guardrail over to the end of that platform? Just...
That location?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a pretty steep drop. It's a pretty... The driveway goes down a pretty steep incline.
So run your finger as to... So you run it all the way out to the end? That's what you're proposing? We'll take it.
Yeah. Yeah, that would create a safer condition.
Thank you.
What's the material of the decking surface under the front porticoes?
Here, right here?
Another decking surface under the portico?
The decking surface?
The stone, yeah.
It's going to be stone?
Stone.
It's stone.
Oh, and I was going to ask, what's the retaining wall material?
That's the... That's going to be a concrete wall with forged stone veneer.
Oh, nice. What kind of stone?
A local stone that we didn't bring a sand crew with.
Just the general color? General color is going to be what's drawn? A grayish stone? Okay.
Of white.
I recall at a prior meeting, there was a reference by a next-door neighbor to... I can fairly certain it was this property, that there may have been a swimming pool here at some point. Is that the case or not?
So what happened? He wanted to have... To change the building to go against the front one, the front house outside. But this is the only way we can do it, because otherwise, if we turned it around, we're going to be a higher building, and we can't do it, you know? So that's...
Okay. That really wasn't my question. I don't know if... Maybe I'm...
Is the entrance to the driveway, he was not happy about, because his children play...
Different one altogether. I think what we're talking about, the next-door neighbor downhill, was concerned about water, the flow of water. Yeah.
Is that this application?
Which removed the building one foot over, because we all have the eight and nine feet, and so we stayed away about one foot more.
No, it looks like, according to Keller Sessions, you're addressing the issues with regard to stormwater management. But I thought I remember that neighbor discussing how, you know, there was a steady flow of water, and he was concerned. And I can't remember if there was... There had been some swimming pool there beforehand. I just wanted to know if that was the case, and if so, how that was dealt with.
I mean, we tried to take care of it as much as we can, and provided... We addressed all these items with our building.
Well, with respect to... I know we're on... We're talking about 98 right now, but there's an existing building at 102, right?
Yes.
And that building, will the placement of... The proposed placement of 102 be further up the street from where 102 is located right now? Or is it going to be built on basically the same foundations?
No, we're going to keep the same eight feet on this side and on this side.
Okay.
We're going to keep the nine on each side.
So it's going to be placed in the same, effectively, the same footprint?
Yes, symmetric.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments, guys?
Oh, the...
It's very handsome.
Probably just adding a handrail to the steps...
Yeah.
Going up to the backyard.
I'm sorry?
Just a handrail going up the steps of the backyard. It looks like you have...
Right here.
No, the steps on the side of the house going up.
Side of the house.
Yeah, it looks like you just have, yeah, more than four steps.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Stand by. We're going to make this a public hearing. So I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on this application to 1-39 98 Lee Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing there's no comments from the public, I make a motion to close the public hearing on application 21-39 98 Lee.
I don't... If I could respectfully... I would prefer to...
Leave it up?
Yeah, leave it open for 2140 as well, because they are very related.
Okay, then we'll move forward. Great. Then we'll... Well, we could actually approve this. Well... Hmm.
I would just table the whole thing. Let's hear 2140 right now. There's no reason not to, right? And then we can vote on both of them.
Sure.
Unless... I mean, I can be outvoted on that, too. I'm not wed to that, but I think it makes more sense.
Open to it. I don't give this meeting any change, but let's get both of them done, and then we'll continue. Okay. So as he said, let's talk about the next one. So the next application is 21-40 102 Lee Avenue. Mr. Abilama?
So it's the same building in the front, except that we have a bay window in the front, and we have a station window in the front. So you can...
Okay, so this one is complementing 98 Lee. And the front of the house, we have gable roof and boden-batten gable with hard plank siding, same as the other one, bay window, like Tom said, and no shutters on this.
Mostly, we did the standing seam. The standing seam in the front. And here, we have the bay window. We had the porch in the front, metal stair in the front. And then mostly the same items that there are in the between 98 or 102. So we have the only things that we have, wood back in the back of the house. And mostly is almost the items that we brought in. We have the stand in the front. And then, kind of, you know, so we went back also to the other militaries in the front in here, and as well as we're going on in the stormwater, we have the same items that we have in the front and the back. And as we spoke about it the last time, with the same items that we worked on. And then... And I don't know if you... We have this... Lance baking here, Lance baking in here, and we have... So we have the same items that we provided in the back.
The slopes also are very similar to the site. It slopes three feet diagonally from the front to the back. So that's why they're oriented the same way. Also, we chose to take the garage down, you know, by the side of the house.
If you have any questions.
With respect to both 98 and 102, was any consideration given to adding a little color? They're both pretty stark white, you know, with like black shutters or dark shutters. This one maybe doesn't have shutters. But I guess the roofing comes across as sort of a... It comes across as black and white. And I see, you know, in looking at the surrounding area, there's other houses that are black and white as well. 98 Lee looks like a black and white house. I think the one next to it, one further down the street, looks black and white. Was any thought given to maybe making one of them? I don't know why white was chosen. Can you explain that to me, for both houses?
I mean, they look the same, but they work... They marry to each other, if you have the two different designs. And everything else that we can add to white really is... It'll still look good, you know?
Yeah, I mean, some people like white cars. I don't like white cars. You know, it's a matter of taste, but I'm just wondering, was any thought given to... You know, was this a conscious deliberate choice, or was this a default?
We have the owner, Mr. Dan Amakuchi.
Announce yourself.
Setify yourself.
Yeah.
My name's Dan Amakuchi. I'm the builder and the owner. One of... Probably my partner, Amelia, who's been here for most of the meetings. This is my first one. So from a marketing standpoint, this is the look that most people... We built a dozen of these over these last couple of years, and it just seems like this black-framed windows with the white seems the way people like to see them, and that's why we're doing it that way. But I think you pointed out, somebody pointed out, there's quite a few white houses on the block, so we kept consistent with what was there as well. So it's not like we're building blue and then a green, and then sort of mixing it up that way, where we get other probably complaints about that. So it's a good, clean, sharp look, and they're both different designs. They'll be landscaped differently, so they won't look exactly the same, but that's the reason for that.
Okay. No, like I said, I don't have a major problem with it, but I'm just... It's a little curious. One thing, if, you know, the effect of sunlight on white is usually a lot less than it would be on another color, but it may just be a matter of taste, and people's tastes change, and maybe white is the safest.
So if we find a buyer that wishes to change the color, like any of the interiors finishes, we'll come back and make that change for them. For the last house, I just want to make a point, because I know that Joe Tramelli, most of the engineering... I think all the engineering issues were worked out and taken care of. My engineer, Paul Bertey, was supposed to be here, has COVID, so he wasn't able to be here, so he wouldn't be able to address it. I think the only issue they were talking about was the storm drain, where they're going to have the tanks put into the rear, and it was going to be a pump-up system. And I think that was part of the letter, the memo, that went back and forth. He was okay with that. But to my understanding, that was the only issue that remained.
Okay.
There is one other thing. I think you had mentioned about the neighbor to the right, the lower lot. So there is a separate... There's an old retaining wall that runs from zero to three and a half to four. to four feet, from front to back, and the neighbor has a fence blocking that. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna replace that retaining wall and place the fence on top of the wall, so it allows both houses that much more privacy.
Okay.
And the neighbor's amenable to that, obviously.
I'm sorry?
And neighbor's amenable to that? It's a common wall, it's their wall.
Yeah, he's sort of requested it.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're gonna do it anyway, but, so it was his idea.
Okay, that's...
Nice for you to do that.
Is there any other questions?
Keep everyone as happy as we can get them.
Right, good walls make good neighbors.
What?
Good walls make good neighbors.
I haven't met him, my partner met him, he's a wonderful guy, and he's actually shared some electric, we needed some power, because we were doing the asbestos removal, and the house that's gonna be coming down, so he's very amenable, so he was, so we're good with him.
Good.
Thank you. We'll take the white.
Any other questions?
Okay.
No, we're good.
Alright, good, thank you.
Good, thank you. Alright. Does anyone on the board have any further questions, or should we open?
So I imagine the same comments we made about 98 apply to this, railings, if the propane has to be moved, and then stormwater has to be coordinated.
Yep. In regard to the propane, so what we would like to do is be able to bury these tanks, so they're not sticking up out of the ground. And I think there's certain code restrictions that, that we need to work out if we were to do that, 10 feet from venting, there's a whole bunch of things that we need to take care of. So we're hoping that we can get these tanks under the ground, so that nobody gets to see them. But that'll be part of the building permit process, I would assume.
Great, we'll be handled with the building department when the time comes. Great, we understand.
Okay, thank you.
Good. And the chairman made a good point about, it, it looks like the driveway is configured in a similar way here, and that it looks like you'd probably have the same issues, potential safety issues, that would warrant some sort of handrail, some sort of protection, as we discussed with 98. Is that fair? Yeah?
And, on the right side.
And, yes, mhm.
Something nice.
Yep, okay.
So let's see, if no comments that are any different than the ones you've already made, I'll also open this to the public hearing. So then I open the application 21-40 102 Lee Avenue.
Making a motion to open it?
Make a motion to the public hearing on application 21-40 102 Lee Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then in succession, I'll close both.
Okay.
So then, motion to close the public hearing on application 21-3998 Lee Avenue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing on application 21-40 102 Lee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think we've, we've done it, so we, I'm good with, okay, in this gentleman. So then, I think both of them are gonna be approved, subject to four conditions is what I have. Number one is landscaping coordinated with the drainage. Number two, they're the ones that Mr. Tramelli wrote. Number two is that the units, the storm tech units are coordinated with the unit numbers, I think, as he specified. The third one is about whatever transpires with the propane tanks, whether bury or move away, and the fourth one is about the railings. So, subject to those conditions, I make a motion to approve application 21-3998 Lee Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And subject to the same conditions, I make a motion to approve application 21-40 102 Lee Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Grab your samples, thank you for bringing them.
Yeah.
The next application is 22-03 Leewood Country Club, One Leewood Drive.
It's gonna be the last.
Oh, tuck out, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who has requested that?
My name's Alyssa, I'm representing Tom McCain's Architects Office. I'm here to present our project at One Leewood Drive, Leewood Golf Course.
Alyssa, you're gonna have to give us your last name, too.
Manfredo, Alyssa Manfredo.
Okay, very good.
Oh, can you grab the mic, too, by the way?
Oh.
The one on the podium over there?
Thank you. Okay, so I am here to present our project at One Leewood Drive. We are proposing site alterations along the existing tennis court on the south side of the clubhouse. Our project will consist of removing some existing retaining walls that were actually damaged in the last storm, and when doing this, we would also like to propose some new retaining walls that will help, you know, reshape the space a little bit. So along the north side, we're doing a 12-foot retaining wall, and it will, to work with the existing grade, and it will cascade down along the east side and the south side as well. In addition to the retaining walls, we're also gonna propose a new... We're gonna propose a new stair on the north side up here, that will help give better access from the clubhouse down to the existing tennis courts. And along the tennis courts, there will be walkways as well, shaping around, you know, to make the site more accessible around the tennis courts, so, if there's any questions.
Okay.
What are the, what are all the other pages that we're not seeing? Yeah, what are, what are the other pages that are in there? Are they just the, the other pages behind that?
Oh, so the other pages, sorry.
The materials and, yeah.
So the walls are gonna be block walls with a beveled front, right there, corner here, just like our standard color. The fences will be, that will go on top, will match some of the existing fences that are there, and they will just be a dark or black aluminum fence, as you can see here.
Yep.
So those are the, really the only materials.
And that's an existing, that's an illustration of an existing fence?
That's one of, so right now, the existing fences are the chain link fences.
Yes.
This is the other railing along another portion of it, so we'll make sure it all matches.
That style, yeah.
This, it's obviously a lot nicer than the chain link fence.
I would agree.
Does one of those pictures show the existing retaining wall that got damaged? I don't see it there.
The existing?
Retaining wall.
Existing retaining wall, does one of them show that?
So it's, you can see part of it here, and part of it here, sorry, very small, so it's a boulder retaining wall along here.
Oh, it's a rubble retaining wall?
Yeah.
Also 12 feet? I mean, the one I think here is, is that right? It's 12 feet?
So it's, I think ours, because we're pulling the grade back a little bit, is a little bit higher than what it is now, because we're excavating part of it for that new walkway, so it's, might be a little bit taller than what it is now, but it will work with the grade that is there for the new location.
Got it. And you have handrails and guardrails at the top of the retaining walls, so we don't have to mention that. Are these block walls there, like, self-engineered? Do you just link them together and they work as retaining wall?
Yeah, so they are a unilock wall, and they'll get anchored to each other, so in the locations of the 12 feet where the, and with the grade behind it, it'll be that wall, and then there's some other locations, and I believe the details are on this page That we will have some CMU units behind the wall to help reinforce it in locations where it doesn't have the grade behind it, because they're the geolock walls, so it has that grid that works with the grade in detail A, whereas detail B, they'll have some reinforced CMUs in the back.
To back it up?
Yeah.
Instead of the geo grids that go back?
Yeah, because there's no grade behind it, because there's that existing pond area, so the grade goes down a lot there, but we need to reinforce that wall.
Great.
As well.
Just curious, I think it's pretty interesting. I think it's a handsome addition.
Yep.
I don't play tennis, but I'd wanna play tennis on that court now. Any other comments, guys?
No comments.
No, makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, so let's see if there's any public comments. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22-03 Leewood Country Club, One Leewood Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is pretty easy. Motion to close the public hearing on the same application, 22-03 Leewood Country Club, One Leewood Drive.
Second.
And I make a motion to approve that.
Second.
What vote?
I seconded it, we have to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. You ready?
Now?
Now, I make a motion to approve application 22-03 Leewood Country Club, One Leewood.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Finelli, I'm the architect for the project at 5 Handfling Road. We're here tonight to present to you an addition to an existing Cape-style house. The house is about 1,450 square feet, and we're pretty much doubling the house, a little bit more, we're going about 1,800 more, and we're just under what's allowed. The beauty of the addition that we're proposing is, it basically happens to the rear and to the second story. Due to the fact that it is a Cape, the house lives a lot larger than it actually is. All the room, there's room upstairs on the second floor inside of the roof, so the way the house exists now, at 1,400 square feet, is deceptive, because of the square footage being in the attic, and, well, I should say, in, at the second floor. And by raising the roof, we will make the house look more traditionally like most of the homes in Eastchester. The house, per the pictures here, this is the subject home right now. The house directly to its left was remodeled a few years back, and it's a two-story. Basically, they did the same exact thing that we're proposing, they added a second story to it, squared it off, and the house immediately to its left is still a smallish, smaller Cape, and you can barely see our home kind of creeping in. Directly across the street are the homes as depicted here. This house right here was before you guys a few months back. They just received approval a few months ago. The house was basically gutted right down to the frame, and there's a second story, and it's, it's pretty large right now. It's, again, very conforming, nice-looking house, but probably twice the size of what you're looking at. So it seems that that's the way of the future, down Handfling. The homes are just getting squared off, and they're getting built up a little more for today's living. So, just from a site plan point of view, if I can point out what we've got going on, the, the home that exists is this rectangle here, and there was a one-car garage that bumped out past the back, and was about 12 feet behind the front of the house. So what we're proposing to do is pull the garage forward and add an addition to the rear of the house, and basically square off the house. We're going to add a portico to the front of the house, again, in keeping with the theme not only going down the street, but very comparable with what you'd see in Eastchester. The house itself is about seven, six and a half feet taller than it is now, so you would assume that adding a second story would make it that much taller. We're allowed to go 33 feet to the ridge, we're only at 27 foot, like, one. So it is in keeping with the scale of the neighbors. We are lower than the house to our left, and we are obviously higher than the house, I mean, I'm sorry, we're lower than the house to our right, and a little taller than the house to our left. The idea is, let's build it, but not make it look ostentatious and stand out from everyone else. If I can, I'll, I'll walk you through, actually, I'm not sure we, if you'd like me to walk you through the plans, I will. I'll go to the elevations just quickly, and then I have a rendering I can show you that I'll clear it up just a little more. But the idea was to, as I said, raise the roof. We added a gable across the front to give the front of the house just a little bit more scale, and start talking to the larger house, which is to the right. To do that, we also started adding a few more gables, which brought the scale down to pedestrian level and kept us closer to the ground, made the house a little bit more, speak a little bit more to the street and to pedestrians. Well, we don't really have pedestrians walk in the neighborhood anymore, but if they were, it'd be a little bit more scaled for them. We are doing a traditional clapboard siding, five-inch, I'm sorry, four-inch, six-inch casings all the way around, six-inch cornerboards, eight-inch fascias and freeze boards, very traditional as far, and simple as far as the detailing for the trim work. The house will be trimmed in white, the roof is gonna be a charcoal color, which is almost a black, but a little bit lighter. The body of the house is a Booth Bay blue, which is a hardy plank material.
Not white, right?
Not white. It's a Booth Bay blue. The homeowner was very adamant, actually, she wanted that blue, she's...
Really nice, yeah, I gotta say, in the rendering.
She wanted something a little different. We did, we were gonna paint the doors, the front door and the garage door, white. I didn't bring the other renderings with me, I'm actually on my third rendering, which I brought with me tonight, but we're staining those doors, and we're gonna stain them. It's a Thermatru door, it'll be stained, I believe the color is, it's a honey type color, it's kinda like a cognac. I don't have an actual sample of it, but it's, it's not a dark brown, it's not a light brown, it's, it's kinda, looks just like cognac, if you fill up a glass, that's what it'll look like. And the windows are traditional Anderson White double hungs. The board made a couple of comments, the ARB made a couple of comments, it was a little contentious back and forth with some of the comments, that I didn't, that I kind of disagreed with them, but I did take three out of the four of their comments, and I made those changes. One of them was, they wanted to see the window above the entry portico shrunk down a little bit. The owner really wanted something wide, she, her, one of her main hopes was to see her chandelier from the street when she finished the addition, so we still are able to give her a large picture window, but we shrunk it down about 16 inches. So we were asked to take one, one side light off on each side, and they were about eight inches apiece, so it got narrower by 16 inches. The second, the second comment was, they wanted to see grill work across the doors on the back of the house. Again, it's in the back of the house, you can't really see it, but we weren't opposed to putting grills there, I was totally fine with it. A third thing that they had asked for was the, they wanted to see the air conditioning compressor units, so I know typically we like to keep them inside of the setback, so even though the mechanical room and the compressors currently live in this corner, I've moved them to the back here and tucked them in between the, inside of the setback towards the back of the house. I just feel, just from a noise point of view, I think it makes more sense to do that. And if you'll just give me one second, I wanna just double-check if there was anything I'm missing. The mineboard siding, compressors, oh, and the big, the biggest thing, I'm sorry, there were four things they asked, and the biggest thing they asked me for was removing, and this is the rendering, removing the siding which we had in the front gable. So the, at one, the contentious point was, why not side this and side in here as well? The issue with putting siding in this gable was there wasn't enough room to carry it down the sideboard. There's only 12 inches of space, and with a six-inch cornerboard and a six-inch piece of trim, it's 12 inches. So it would have, it did look weird having it just sided in the gable, so I've decided to create more, create, to make it look more like a little jewel, we're gonna wrap it in AZEC. So I've decided to create more, create, to make it look more like a little jewel, we're gonna wrap it in AZEC. We have some trim bands that are coming through, so the shadow lines will break it up. And we follow that same detailing through here, which was a recommendation, to choose one or the other. So we decided to choose to have this gable mimic that gable. And once there's, you know, house numbers and things like that up there, so, it'll, it'll break it up, but I still think the, the look looks a lot nicer. It kind of ties in and starts speaking to the two gables, and then also the doors being stained. I think the architect just speaks to, to the other parts. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, I just kind of went through it quickly, but I'm happy to answer anything you guys might have. And show you the samples that I did bring with me, if you'd like to see those, this is the Booth Bay blue, I can bring it up, or just put it up right here. And the charcoal color, I'm sure you've seen it a million times. It's that guy right there, with the arrow. And then the trim is, again, is white AZEC. If and when there are wrought iron railings, like the staircase on the side, that's actually be wrought iron, it'll be painted black. Again, just very traditional, simple detailing, nothing ostentatious.
At the time that you presented to the ARB, did you have the, the staining of both the doors and the, and the garage?
I did.
In the same way?
I did, the only thing that was missing is there was actually blue siding like this right in here.
Okay.
Yep, that was the, that was the only.
It was in the, above the, yeah, in the gable above, but not above the garage, and that's what they, okay.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct.
So you've, you've basically, and, and they suggested you, you either do both, or neither?
Or neither.
And you've chosen neither?
I've chosen neither simply because I can't run it down the side, and it would look awkward.
Yeah.
You know, it'd stand out differently.
I think it works.
Yeah, with the light fixtures, I think it sets it off, it gives it a reason to not have the siding there.
Is there a fireplace?
So there's an existing chimney that we're gonna extend, and we're, it's, it's brick, it's in disrepair, so it needs to be repointed. My, what I'm proposing is to stucco the whole thing along with the base, and it'll be a gray colored stucco, just a semititious color.
Along the base and up the chimney, same thing? So you're gonna put those little cornices at the top of the chimney?
Yes, since it's being extended.
Very nice.
Make it look nice, a little, give it a little corbling.
What's the white at the front doorway, the big flat, that's also AZEC?
This in here, yeah, it's, it's all gonna be, anything that you see in white here is AZEC.
That's just flat AZEC?
And I, I am proposing some crown molding over the top of the window heads, again.
Yeah, I like that too.
Give it more of a traditional detailing, little shadow line, I think it'll look nice.
Okay. If there's no comments from up here, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-two dash zero four five Handfling Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close same public hearing, twenty-two zero four five Handfling Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, just had one follow-up question, and it's, I, I know you're expanding principally in the back of the house.
Yes.
What, what is the, the amount of impervious surface that's being added? I, I know it's probably, it's, it's in here in the numbers at some point, but, you know, what is it, and what is it relative to what's existing? I mean, what?
So existing, we have thousand eighteen ninety-one, let's say nineteen hundred square feet. And we're going up to twenty-eight forty, so.
So it's about a fifty percent, yeah. Okay, and the, the, the stormwater management, there's additional measures being taken to.
Yeah, we're, we're actually proposing to take on all of the, all of the stormwater, not just what we're adding on. We're putting on five cultech chambers, three in front, two in the back.
Yep.
And the reason we split that up is the gutter system, the way it's just laying out, we're gonna have a larger gutter load to the front than in the rear. We're not doing anything to the driveway. From what I understand, they are not proposing to expand the driveway now, they'll probably do it sometime in the future, and they'll go to the building department when they plan on doing that, but right now, it's, we're cutting it right across the front of the house, and they're gonna keep what's there, they want to put the money into the house for now.
Okay, good.
So you can, you could add another chamber, or that's got overcapacity right now?
Yeah, we've got a ton more to go back, or even across the front if we had to.
At that time?
And which, which way does the property, property slope, if at all?
There's a slight slope to the front, it's actually relatively flat from here to right across the front of the house, dead flat.
Yep.
And then there's about a two percent pitch from the front to the street itself.
Okay. It's a, it's a very big backyard, relative.
It's, it's actually huge for Eastchester.
Yeah, and it's sort of irregularly shaped too, but it's quite large.
So we do have room if we ever needed to expand chambers to the rear.
Yep.
Do anything like that, but we have room.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
If there's no other comments or questions, I think we're up to the approval part, so I make a motion to approve this application, twenty-two zero four five Handfling Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Mr. Finelli.
Thank you very much, guys, good night.
Nice to see you. Next application, twenty-two zero five Adriatic Cafe, seven thirty-five White Plains Road.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. My name is Joe Fernandez, I'm an architect, five seventy-five White Plains Road, Eastchester. We're proposing a, a new cafe, takeout restaurant, in place of what was an existing nail salon, next to Trader Joe's. And you can see Trader Joe's here in the, in the overview, and we're actually right in the next little store, the strip store right next door. So we're all familiar with the defunct Lord &amp; Taylor's right across the street, Trader Joe's, and we are adjacent in a small storefront.
How many decades do you think it will take for us to stop calling it Lord &amp; Taylor's?
How many decades will it take for us to stop calling it the Tappan Zee Bridge?
That's right.
Or the Triborough Bridge.
So it's a, it's a very small footprint, it's just over eight hundred square feet, with the front obviously bordering on White Plains Road, and the rear towards the parking lot, which they share with Trader Joe's. Because of the space, we're adding another ADA bathroom, there's an existing bathroom, but we had to add another bathroom because of the occupancy. And essentially, what she's created, or what she'd like to create, is a takeaway kind of menu. She does have a little bit of seating here, and that obviously added to the occupancy and the addition of this, ADA bathroom facility. She'll have some display bakery-style glass, you know, four-foot sections with different pies and cakes and things that she'd like to sell. And she's gonna have a, a small line, a cook line, it's about nine, ten feet, with a type one hood. We're very familiar with your requirements, we've done quite a few applications with you. So the type one hood, we have all the directional fumes going out towards White Plains Road with an inline fan. She has also a downstairs area, which she's gonna use for a little bit of prep work, and some food storage, dry food storage. And she has this existing space, which she'll use for an employee changing room, locker room. These are all Department of Health requirements. The, um, space has existing ceramic tile, which she's gonna keep, and she's just going to retile the back area, which is required by code and, and by the Department of Health. She has also, outside of the open kitchen area, there'll be this small wall, which will have a small prep area fridge, and then beyond that, her wash bay. So it's all nicely contained. Not sure what else we have. We have just Egress plans and lighting plans. It's a pretty wide-open space, there's a lot of glass that, that is on White Plains Road, so it makes it very nice and bright, on most days. Sorry. Okay, so we have a lot of the, just the, the engineering of it, which I know you're all versed in. And then some depictions of the new ADA bathroom. And I believe that's it. Her, her objective is essentially to create a takeaway-type atmosphere, although someone could easily purchase something and sit, she has a few tables, maybe before venturing into Trader Joe's for that adventure of food shopping.
What, what are the proposed hours of operation?
Oh, I have that on my, my depiction, it's gonna be from ten AM to seven PM.
Okay.
Tuesdays through Sunday, so she'll be taking the Mondays off.
I, I think the, the one concern that I have, which, we, we, not so long ago did another application for, and I don't think the store lasted, the Applestone Meat Company. Is that still in operation? I don't know that it is.
Yeah.
No, that's out of business.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, but we, there was quite a bit of, I guess it was a different issue there, because the, the big issue there was that they were gonna stay open twenty-four hours. But that, that was really something that was all self-service, so it was, but, the concern that, one, one concern that I would have with the proposed restaurant use here, even if it's largely takeout, is of course parking. We, we have, anyone who has been to Trader Joe's knows that at times, it's, it's just extremely difficult. And I know there's, there's, I think there's five spaces here that are dedicated to this store, or is that right?
There is an alcove beyond the Trader Joe's footprint that is strictly for that, you know, storefront area. I know myself, every time I've gone there, I've had to park in the open area of Trader Joe's.
Yeah.
It's a good problem to have, I guess.
If you're Trader Joe's, sure. But in, in terms of, in terms of conformity with the zoning laws, I guess, is this an existing non-conforming? Is there enough spaces for the?
Right, so we, we provided a zoning calculation for that, and parking calculation, to show that the previous use and this use, you know, it's essentially a wash.
Okay, but the, the previous use, as I understand it, it's, it's not conform, it doesn't have the amount of parking that we would want it to have in an ideal world.
Physically, in a real world.
And, and according to the code, but this is an existing, the previous usage was non-conforming, and this would match the previous usage, I think that's what you're saying, more or less?
Correct, so, so essentially, there's a credit issued to space that comes with a C of O.
Okay.
And, and so we comply with that based on the code.
Good.
I mean, this is, you know, this, this, my client is a, is a local resident, you know, and she's trying to, you know, do something here, and, and, you know, she, she thought that this was such a great place for her, just because it's so close to where she lives, she's right up off Wilmont, so.
Yeah. And probably the fact that there's a lot of foot traffic at Trader Joe's helps. Okay.
One of the more interesting things about the application is description of what's going to be offered here.
It's delicious, oh my god.
Like, I'm getting hungry, I'm having a dinner.
I've tried it, and I'll, I'm gonna, I, I can't, you know, the words on that page do not even remotely describe how good that food is.
Oh, have you tasted her?
Oh, yes, because she brought us samples, we were, she actually came to our office to, to solicit us to work, and we said we were too busy, and she brought us these pies the next day.
Got your attention?
We were, we were on the job, we were on the job.
So, so if we held you up for another month and made you come back with pies?
I don't think I'm gonna get pies for bad behavior, no, thank you.
Oh, and she's a resident of Eastchester?
She is.
Any connections to Terranova's on Arthur Avenue?
I cannot say.
Okay, we asked you all the questions that have nothing to do with the application, so.
They all have to do with the application, Mr. Chairman. We're looking out for the, the well-being of the town.
Yes, we're looking out for the well-being of the town, as are you, Mr., Mr. Fernandez. Okay, so I make a motion to open the public, public hearing on this application, twenty-two dash zero five Adriatic Cafe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think that's what he's here for. So, motion to close the public hearing on this application, twenty-two zero five Adriatic Cafe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do a special, I've been reading through this, and type one hoods require special permit approval from the planning board, is that true, Bajay? Or, like, do we have to do a separate approval, special permit for that?
No, I think that's why they're here, basically.
That's part of it, right, so, we're approving the application and the special permit together.
Type one hood. Yep.
Okay, cool.
Right.
So I could do that together, so then I make a motion to approve application twenty-two zero five Adriatic Cafe, along with the special permit approval for the type one hood thereby required.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck. It'll take a little.
Summertime?
You'll have to, you'll have to talk to Jay, but I think they're gonna try and move as quickly as possible.
Yeah, they gotta be in tomorrow, right?
That's good, I mean, and it's, there should be lots of great stuff, they're gonna have to try, great, thank you.
Thank you.
The last application is twenty-one dash thirty-two ninety-five A Taco Avenue. It's being presented by a member of the planning board, Mr. Campana, and he's going, obviously have to recuse himself from voting on his own application.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, Louis Campana, architect for the applicant. Ninety-five A Taco Avenue is a twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety-six square foot lot, located in R six zone at the bottom of Taco Avenue. It's a flag lot, there's twenty-five feet of frontage on Taco Avenue, so the majority of the lot sits behind another lot on, on the street. What we are proposing is to demolish the existing structure down to the foundation, and then construct a new single-family dwelling with a large addition, which will be located towards the east side, and then two smaller additions located on, on the west side. The house conforms with all of the Balkan area regulations, however, because of the twenty-five foot frontage, we, we did seek an area variance, which was granted by the CBA earlier in January. If you've been to the site, you could see that the site slopes pretty drastically from, from the west down to the east. So in order to facilitate a rear yard for playing, and also a twenty-by-forty pool and a future pool pavilion, we've introduced a number of retaining walls in order to accomplish that. On the, on the west side, we have two retaining walls, approximately three feet high, which will be all planted out, creating planters. Then a flat portion where we have the. Then a flat portion where we have the the proposed pool and pool pavilion, and then a short foot and a half wall over to the east side, just to ease the grade for the drainage galleries, and also just for the lawn on the side of the pool as well. We are creating retaining walls here, just just south of the pool, that'll have a series of masonry steps that goes up to a lawn area, with then more steps up to the back patio. The the existing entrance of of the house is located at ground level on the exterior, however, when you enter, you walk up approximately five steps to the to the main level. Now, we wanted to achieve a better condition, so we decided to make that transition on the exterior, so this way, when you enter the house, you enter into the main, the main level. We also have a retaining wall to the south side of the house here. I'm sorry, before I go there, the way we were able to make that transition into the house was to create planting beds that flank the stairs at the front portico, and those would also be planted. To the south of the house, we have another retaining wall, because our driveway actually goes down in front and then under, so the garage would be on the lower level, under this two-story addition. And we have a retaining wall on the east side of the house, again, to pick up that grade around the house and to bring down the scale. I do have exterior elevations, but I also do have renderings, but I'll just run through the materials quickly here. But before I do that, what what we've done here is we took a minimalistic approach to traditional massing and roof lines, and we created, or the use of different materials like stucco veneer and borrel shiplap siding. What we wanted to do is have the texture and color create the interest and breathe life into the massing, as opposed to embellishing with heavy trim. So we wanted a more clean, modern look for this for this dwelling. So the roof, for the most part, will be timberline asphalt roofing in a charcoal color. All of the rakeboards and and eaves will be borrel. Borrel and color, and the color would be farum ball off black. Borrel is a cementitious material, similar to hardy, and the reason for that is because that material has a bit of a texture to it, and it holds the darker color, as opposed to an azac, which is, has a slick surface, and over time, that color would fade. The stucco would be a three-coat cement stucco, California stucco, in a limestone color. All the lintels and the sub-sills, again, would be borrel, and that'll also be painted farum ball off black. The windows are Lincoln windows, aluminum cladding on the exterior, black. The front door would be an aluminum black, aluminum black frame with glass. The stone would be fieldstone veneer with bluestone caps. And the gutters, gutters and leaders would would be galvanized steel. We have cable railing on the terrace with decorative brackets below. And we have a standing seam lead coated copper roof on the front portico. Here's some of the material selections, so you can see what we're proposing. Here's the borrel nickel gap siding, so there's a bit of a reveal in between each board, just to create a shadow line, a roofing material. This is the lead coated copper standing seam roof at the front portico, farum ball off black. This is from the Lincoln website, these are the windows that we're proposing. Bluestone flatwork for all the terraces. Here's our light fixture from, I believe it's from Restoration Hardware. The garage door would be black aluminum with frosted glass panels. Here's the galvanized steel gutters and leaders. And this was sort of an inspiration for the project. At the last meeting with ARB, there were a couple comments, and they wanted us to include them on the renderings. So what we've done here is we've added the gutters and leaders to the renderings, and also the the light fixtures. I do have Adamo Mairono here, who can discuss the site development plan.
That's why Adamo's here.
That's why he's here.
I was wondering what he's doing here.
I thought he was just a big fan. I mean, that's a good way to win favor, but now, now you're...
Let's finish with this, because it's great, it's very, yeah, it's very handsome.
Yes.
It's really nice, yeah, it's beautiful. I like the way you've, everything's in the back, the front, as you said, not as many windows, because they were spending all their time out back, it's so beautiful back there. And that says, what's the exposure in the back?
I'm sorry?
What's the exposure in the back? That's that's the north.
North.
That's north, right?
It's the northern side, yeah.
That's the northern side.
But it'll get nice east-west sun path.
Yeah, you'll get that all day long, with the sun moving over.
Exactly.
Yeah, so there's lots of nice windows in the back.
So Louis, apart from the comments that the ARB had about showing the leaders and gutters and and the lighting in the rendering, did they have any recommendations, any suggestions as to, you know, what was actually being built or proposed?
They did not.
They did not?
They did not, no. The only question they did have, actually, was if lead coated copper is still acceptable to use. And if it wasn't, no one at the time knew, I think Margaret actually confirmed that it is acceptable. But depending on availability of the material, which lead coated copper right now is very difficult to get, we'd probably end up going with a zinc coated copper or an aluminum.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's just the front portico. Actually, one other thing that we we did review last time was the location of the pool fence. Actually, the pool fence was not part of the drawing at that point with ARB, but what we've done is, and you'll see in the landscape plan, there is some existing and some proposed screening along the perimeter. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do a code compliant mesh or chain link within the hedge on the three sides. And then here, we're gonna come across with a decorative powder coated, powder coated aluminum fence, pool fence, with an access gate here, eight feet wide, and then a gate here at the top of the steps. And that'll just run across and then connect back to the perimeter. In terms of the pool equipment, it is not located on the plan, but we are going to put it in the rear, either, probably in either corner, at a certain distance it needs to be, I believe it's, I believe it's five feet.
Five feet.
From the property line.
I don't have any comments. If...
Oh, looks good.
I was gonna take it away.
Adamo, would you like to speak about drainage?
All right. Good evening, Board, Adamo Mairono from Community Designs and Engineering. So yes, you received the comments from Joe Tramelli today, obviously, we received them as well, and we will continue to work with them to address their points. Also, we'll, together with Louis as well, we'll, you know, address those comments that he had, obviously, but basically, we are capturing, so again, there's the existing house here, obviously, we're taking no credit for any existing impervious area, we are completely capturing all of the existing and proposed impervious areas on-site with storm water mitigation. Kettle sessions did come out to witness the tests, they were performed back in September, actually, well, it was right after Ida, so it was probably the worst-case scenario we can come up with, which is good, because you kind of want to take the worst-case scenario, which is why you do see, you know, obviously, the results were not as favorable, but you do see a number of Coltech units in regards, obviously, to the 100-year storm that we're calculating this as, and we pretty much just broke it up into segments. The top portion is going to units in the driveway area, and the whole bottom section and driveways going to units at the bottom portion there. And then, you know, obviously, the minimum distance is away from the pool and the property. Pretty much covers the storm water.
Everything?
Good.
So Mr. Tramelli's comments, of which there are quite a few, you're saying they will be addressed on the?
Of course, yeah. There's some, you know, pertaining to the actual storm waters, more, I think he had some additional grading that he wants to see, and some site features that Louis and I can, you know, work together to collaborate our plans with his plans on those additional items.
All right.
If it was Joe were here, I'd like to ask if, you know, is this something that we can?
I think there's quite a few.
Yeah, is this, is this so many that we we can't approve it at this point?
He usually puts down a condition of approval if he so intends. He has not wrote that, so I will imagine, and just reading through, it seems like there's something that still need to be worked through. Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
So then, let me just do the public hearing, do you mind? Even though it seems sort of...
Louis, you probably wouldn't understand, but we need to do a public hearing, it's a matter of...
Right, so what we're gonna do and leave it open, so I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 21-32, 95A Taco Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I mean, that being said, I don't think there's any of the comments, it's quite, it's a very handsome application. I think the only things are, and we've asked all the questions, are are these.
Right.
So these will be addressed, and then we'll come back and continue?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So we'll keep the public hearing open?
Yes, I won't close it.
Okay.
If you see me saying I make a motion to close, stop me. I'm paying attention.
We're really not used to this in-person stuff yet, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we're sort of giddy. All right, thank you, Mr. Campana. And I do say, I think Mr. Yamaselli has got a lot to up his game a little bit here.
Yanacita?
Oh, Yanacita, right, Yanacita, yeah, he's gotta up his game.
Very good, yes. Oh, no, I think John, you know, made this sort of a feature that I think both the members of this board and our sizable viewing audience at home look forward to seeing what what the finished product's gonna look like, and more often than not, it comes pretty close. So, uh-oh, he's got pies for us, I think.
The good thing is, it's a back lot, so we were able to explore some unique options.
Yes.
Something that would differ a little bit from everything else.
Yeah, especially the the back part of the house, too.
Yes.
It's a different look altogether, and I kind of like it.
Do you render these yourself, or do you send them out?
No, I have to send those out.
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, let's, Louis put his other hat back on now.
Come back here, and we will approve meeting minutes, is that right?
Yes.
So who can approve? Do we have enough people to approve? This is December 2nd?
I think Margaret's been telling us the last few times that everyone can approve. You don't actually have to have been present to vote, but I, but I don't know who who was present at the...
Mr. Bonano, Mr. Nemisak, Mr. Cunningham, and Mr., all four of us.
Okay, well, not all four of us here.
Well, three out of four.
We still have a quorum.
We've got a newbie.
So you can approve it, actually. So I make a motion to approve, subject to the comments made by Mr. Nemisak, which were sent forward to Margaret, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
What's that, Jay?
I was just talking to Louis.
Okay, so we're done. And then I make a motion to close the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of Thursday, February 24, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.